Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Merringa.
Present.
Norca.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Present.
Vanderwaal.
Present.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Sines from Granville-Jennison Congregational Church. So, for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, then we're going to follow that with the pledge of allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. As we begin to pray, I'm reminded of the words of St. Paul, who said, "I urge, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives." And I think we're blessed with that in the city of Granville. Gracious God and Father, as we gather here this evening, we wish to first give you thanks and praise for being our God. We thank you for your faithfulness and all that you have done for us. Your blessings are too numerous to count. We always thank you for our world, our country, our state, and our city. Father, we thank you for all of the wonderful people that are here on our behalf tonight. They work hard and they work together to make all of our lives better. We are grateful for all that they do and ask that you be with them. Watch over them as they watch over us. Father, we ask that you bless our mayor, our council members, government staff, and all those in our police, fire, and public work departments. Bless them with peace, harmony, and a servant's heart. Keep them safe and keep them well. And, Lord, let them know how much we appreciate them and bless them with your faithfulness through our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Pastor, for being with us tonight. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. No, I appreciate being able to do this for you.
Thank you. So, council, before you have the agenda for tonight, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Motion to support and a discussion. All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay, we also have the minutes from our last meeting, June 24. Had a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Discussion, additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to highlight? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay, so, Ken, it's that time of the year where we have two fiscal year bills. First one, it's about, or, yeah, old fiscal year, new fiscal year, anything you want to point out before we open it up for questions?
Yeah, I've got several to highlight tonight, and I'm not throwing Charlie out there today because they're almost all his, so, parks and public works related. So, on page one on the old fiscal year bills, Quality Air, the invoice for $24,860, that was the final payment on the Police Department boiler replacement project from last year. So, that is done and after tonight will be paid for. On page two, it's a smaller bill, Great Lakes Tree Service, $4,135, but just noted that because that is related to the tree damage we had in a couple of parks from a storm a couple of weeks ago that has now been cleaned up. Several then that follow, a couple then that follow anyway, in the parks on page two for both of these in-house construction or in-house concrete. They did the Heritage Park concrete work in the parking lot there and sidewalks. And then Seatsman Excavating is the entity that we engaged to complete the reconstruction of the pathways in Heritage Park. So, the first bill was $42,000 plus and the second was 23 and a half, so a fairly good chunk right there. And then the biggest one on for tonight's list was $129,600. That was for Strauser Construction, and that's the firm that did the recent Cape Seal projects. And Ivan Rest Avenue was the big one and a couple of smaller ones as well. So, a lot of parks, a lot of streets, a little bit of city buildings in there, but there may be additional questions, so be happy to try to answer any that council might have.
Okay, any questions for Ken or Jane about the bills from the old fiscal year? Okay, don't see any questions or comments. Is there a motion to approve the bills for the old fiscal year in the amount of $355,460.24?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. New fiscal year already. We're only a week into it, but we've got some bills.
Yeah, not a very big total there, and the majority of it's related to DDA activity, getting ready for the Vintage Festival upcoming event. So, I really didn't have anything to highlight there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of $13,657.34?
So moved. Support.
Motion to support. Any questions for Ken or Jane about any of those bills? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council on any matter? Please just come on up to the podium. Mr. Jenningson, you had a busy Fourth of July.
Yes, we did.
It was really good.
Amanda knocked it out of the park. You guys picked an awesome person to lead the Granville, organize it. She did an awesome job in the fire department and police department game. I haven't seen it that packed in years. All the bleachers were full, kids were having fun. The day went good, the parade. I got lots of good feedback on the parade. Yeah, it was a short one, but it was a good one. We only had to have a talk with one person because they started to sit on their float and gather candy all around them, and they were going to toss it. And we told them before the parade started, that's not, you know, cannot do that. And they go, all right, you know, so. And I'd like to thank the police department for being there for us. When the kids kind of got out of hand, the police department came over and took care of them. I mean, just calmed them down, so it's that way everyone could have a good time. So, we look forward to next year. I know Amanda just texted me and said she's putting a presentation together for you guys, so she'll have more details.
Thank you for all the work you did. I know you were out there early and...
Six in the morning until one in the morning, so.
Six in the morning until one in the morning.
Yep. I watched, make sure everyone got out okay, and so.
Thank you.
It's, I like serving the community, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up. Bill, welcome.
Happy to be here, Mayor.
Happy to have you here. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Bill. Mayor and council members, my name is Bill Schrader. I live at 3944 McCray Street, Granville. I've been here almost forever. My comments tonight had to do with the Fourth of July activities. I understand it was a disappointment for the pancake breakfast, but I understand that it could not be helped because of the activity going on at the school. The comment referenced to the craft show, and I'm hearing this, we had a number of people at our, at our street where we gathered for the fireworks, and the comments were, "The area where the craft show is turned into be an obstacle course for people with walkers or young women pushing their carts through. It's just a difficult place to be. At one time, it was by the soccer field, and it's a great place to have it." I'm told that they got to have it because of the fireworks going on, however, they go on at 10 or after, or 10, so it'd be recommended, whoever the parade chair person is or activity is, to move it over to the soccer field. The parade itself, the highlight to me was the Granville band, the gymnastic, and one of the neighbors said in one word, he says, "It's an hour and a half of commercials. We never had that many semi-trailers ever in the parade." It seemed that we don't have anything creativity anymore of making floats like that. One year, we had the church, it had their band going, and a couple of others, but we didn't have any of that this year. Hopefully, in the planning goes into this, they ask for volunteers or people to put their input into the parade, into the, into the parade. The, the highlight of the, the activities that went on in Granville is, I can't stand up about the music, or the music in the common area. The four or five Friday nights out there attracted a lot of city, a lot of people from the greater Granville area. So, Mayor, that's my comments here, and that's, that's not only my personal one, but I've had something like 35 people in our neighborhood gathered in front yard of two or three neighbors, and they had some comments. So, I wanted to come up tonight to express my thoughts on that and let the Granville know. And one other comment, I don't know if there's any truth to it, but the American Leash Improvement seven night had their bikers, a number of their bikers to lead the parade. However, they were tasked to pay $300. I don't know if that's true or not, but they opt to go to, and they all opt to go to, I was told, we go to Allen, Delaware, veterans programs are free, are free. So, that might be food for thought. Thank you, council.
No, I appreciate the comments. I see Ken's making notes and Mr. Jenningson is taking note as well, so appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the council? Last call, last, Teresa, welcome.
Thanks. Hello. Okay, I just want to take a minute to thank city council for addressing our concerns at the last council meeting and listening to the DDA and following up with that, inviting us to come and speak to council and share what it is that the DDA is doing. And I don't want to take Griffin's very first city council meeting, but I do just want to be sure that within the next month or two, we're able to get on a city council agenda and come and share with you some of the great things we're doing and have conversation about how we can continue to partner together financially and otherwise. And then I just want to call attention to the June expenditure from the DDA that you see in your packet. I know that it says draft on it, which is great because it looks like in the one that went into the city council packet, the $24,066.38 of parking lot maintenance is not refunded in the version that is in your packet. The finance director was able to spend some time on it later that day, and the version that she sent for the DDA packet does have that refund in it. So, I'm not exactly sure how approval of all of these items goes. I just want to be sure when the final June expenditure is approved, it is the one that is in the DDA packet, not the draft that is in the city council packet. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Anybody else? We have with us Griffin Graham, our new city manager. Anything you want to share with us tonight? Put you on the spot without any notice, welcome. You'll be here in two weeks.
Yeah, about a week away, and I'll be getting started, and then two weeks till the first meeting, but I'm just really excited to be here, excited to get to meet all of you, and just really appreciative of Ken and all of his help over the last couple of weeks. So, happy to be here and really excited to get started, so thank you all.
Looking forward to having you start. Thank you. Anybody else? Last call. Okay, next item, something we've talked about quite a while, zoning ordinance and related to parking on street. Chris, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those in the room I haven't met, my name is Chris Corey. I'm with McKenna, serving the Community Development Department of the city, and here with a revised version of the RV parking ordinance. I'm going to recap the whole thing quickly, but really highlight what's been changed since last time. First thing, when it comes to rear and side yard RV parking, this ordinance does not change anything. That is allowed year-round, provided you have a fence or landscaping around your yard and you keep the RV at least two feet from the property line. So, what we're talking about here is front yards. On street, obviously, you guys kicked that to the table and didn't bring it back, so we're not talking about that either. What we've done in this updated version is create new definitions of parking and storage. Parking, as previously defined in the ordinance, was anything longer than seven days, excuse me, anything shorter than seven days consecutively or 48 days in a calendar year. That's been updated to a definition of keeping an operational and ready-to-use RV in the same place for under 48 hours. Parking of an RV would be permitted functionally year-round. It'd be permitted May 1 to October 31, even without the 48-hour time limit, because storage, which I'll get to in a second, would be allowed. November 1 to April 30, in the quote-unquote winter, that would be the 48-hour limit, but it would be allowed. Now, storage. What is storage? Storage is either keeping that RV in the same place for more than 48 hours or keeping an RV on a property in the front yard that is in a state of unreadiness for immediate use, which could include it being covered, disassembled, or temporarily inoperable. And boats and trailers, things that can't move on land on their own, are always considered under this draft inoperable unless they are attached, hitched, to an operable vehicle. In order to help with the 48-day limit enforcement, which we've talked about, is a problem, the draft ordinance includes two provisions for, the city will assume the 48 hours has been violated if either of these are observed. The first one is the recreational vehicle being observed in the same or similar location for three consecutive days. The second is observed in the same or similar location on any three days in a 10-day period. By giving ourselves those two standards explicitly, feel like there's a better opportunity to enforce that 48-hour limit. So, in summary, rear yard, no time limit, year-round, as long as it's fenced or landscaped in. Front yard, summertime, no time limit. Wintertime, 48-hour time limit enforced as described. I'm interested in conversation and where you guys want to go with this next.
Thoughts, comments?
Just to quick clarify, so the winter 48 hours is on property, not on the street, because you can't be on the street overnight, correct?
On, on property.
So, that's on property in your driveway?
In the driveway, in the front yard.
It's got to be on pavement.
It's got to be on pavement. So, we're assuming a driveway or circle drive or something.
Or it's my pad or something.
Question, matter of interpretation or misinterpretation. So, on the memo, it says side yard, side or rear yard parking or storage must be at least two feet from all property lines, and I don't know if that includes section, I'm assuming this is, we've had a few drafts of this, I'm assuming this is the last draft. I'm not sure, or I'm making the assumption that that addresses B5 because B5 in their front yard parking, May to October, it still says five feet away from public light of way or the road, if the road does not have sidewalks. Did we not change that to two feet? And is that assumption that it would be covered on the last item on your memo, or are we leaving that as it was?
So, in the draft, we didn't change the five feet for the front yard, and that's not reflected in the memo, it's not in the memo at all, which I apologize for. Actually, it is in the memo, the memo lists two feet, but the, but the draft still says five, so I think that's something we should, we should determine. But it's not that box in the chart, it's the one above where it says front yard parking. Under the new ordinance, the old ordinance and the new, no change. For side and rear, you have to stay two feet away from those. But in the front, it went from zero to five, we talked about two. We should confirm which way we want to go there.
I'd like to, but we need to have a consensus here, so.
Well, personally...
And I didn't know if that was a typo or not, so just, that's my only question.
I think two makes sense, given that it's two on the other side. You know, it's property lines on either side, two feet, then it's consistent.
Does that...
I like two as well, going back to, I think, one of your original comments, Gelderlos, when you talked about length, length of driveway, especially in the older sections of town.
Other than that, I, I think it's great. It's been a long road to get here, so. We can make that change.
Yeah, that would be in B5. We changed five feet to two feet in B5.
Any other thoughts, comments? JR?
Yeah, good catch, Randy. I agree. I think five was intentional, but I think two gives people some grace as well if they have some smaller driveways. And I know that's been a topic of conversation with the Planning Commission for quite a while. I like also pulling apart parking from storage. That gives some leeway and some, also some grace to different seasons of people traveling or hunting or winter adventures, whatever that may be. So, besides that slight change, I think, I think I like it.
Other comments?
I guess just a couple of questions, maybe. So, I'm wondering, I mean, I do like these changes. I wonder if the 48 hours is a reasonable amount of time for those that are preparing a trailer to either leave or come back. I think we had some neighbors here a couple of meetings ago that said, you know, it can take two or three days to properly, you know, get a refrigerator to temperature and to get stuff set up. So, I'm wondering if 48 hours is long enough if that meets that need. And then I guess I'm wondering about the three days in any 10-day period, so I could have my trailer in the driveway and be loading up and getting ready to go on a trip, leave for a week, come back and have my trailer back in my driveway on day 10, and it's considered to be storage. So, I mean, I don't know how long people normally leave, but if I leave for a weekend and come back, or if I even leave for a week, the way this is written, and come back, and I've got two days on one end or one day on the other end or whatever, then I'm in violation of that 48-hour rule. I don't know if that's reasonable.
I mean, in order, we could address that by just sort of bumping everything up. We could go to 72 hours, make it four consecutive or four and 10, or something like that. And the reason for the, some number in, some bigger number, if we could talk about what numbers those are, is because of our inability to observe every RV every day, even what we're playing about, to basically say, all right, well, we'll see if it's there in a week, and if it's still there, there's working assumption. But you make a good point, if people are going with a weekend and come back and, well, actually, it's gone all weekend, you just didn't see it.
Or even gone for a week and coming back. I mean, if people are leaving and going with a trailer during the winter, I don't know what the typical length of time would be that people are gone, if it's a couple of weeks, if it's, you know, over a weekend.
We, we could make it four and seven or something like that.
I don't know what the magic number is either.
Yeah, and I know, yeah, this is, I think we've talked about this before.
It could be problematic for somebody who's maybe for a short time and coming back.
Yeah. Searching for someone who's found the right answer to this, it's not...
I don't know what the right answer is.
But, but there's something, there may be some logic to saying, look, if you're...
It's just make sure you stay away longer than a week if you're coming back, but...
Well, any, what are the other thoughts from council?
No, I'm assuming this came, some other municipality has these numbers, I mean...
48 hours is very common, but I don't know that I could tell you why it's common, sort of picked as a two days, two days to load and unload, and when do you get beyond that? What are you doing? But I see the argument for 72 hours for a three-day window because of things that have been talked about here, about having to prep refrigerators and load up, and that's all understandable, so.
I don't usually do this, but we do have some experts here in the audience tonight, I think.
I, I, the one thing I, I've noticed is not everybody camps the same. So, like, for me, we usually go out three days, and it takes two days to load, and it usually takes four days to clean up. And sometimes it takes three days to load, so depending on my husband's around and he's off work. Other people, I've noticed, they, they get it out, they go on a big trip for two weeks, they come back, and then they clean it up and they put it in storage. And they might do that only two or three times a year, so. But for, in one gentleman I, I talked to, he camps every weekend with his kids. So, his camper was there in his driveway from Monday to Friday, and he had, so we can come out and tell him he couldn't do that because he had neighbors complaining. So...
Can we just clarify quickly that this would only apply during the wintertime? So, during the summertime period, there is unlimited amount of time. You can be in your driveway all summer long if you'd like.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. We can get, we can get that. Oh, okay, so summer's unlimited, winter's 48.
Correct.
Yeah, in the front yard. In the backyard, it's always unlimited.
Okay.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but I know that...
You were looking at me and I thought maybe it was...
No, that's good. Thank you. Thoughts about changing the times or leaving it alone because it's wintertime and...
I mean, I, I was going to chime in on the 48 hours. I mean, one, our code enforcement officer is very part-time, especially in the winter, and if there were some hypothetical person that was reporting, you know, RVs being stored for more than 48 hours, by the time it got to the code enforcement officer, it may be gone by then anyway. So, I think 48 hours is still a fine number. I don't think we need to extend that. My opinion.
Any other thoughts? That almost sounds like a motion, but we, it's still, this matter's been tabled, so is there a motion to remove this proposed ordinance from the table?
So moved. Support.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposition, say no. Randy? Further discussion?
Do we need a motion to change the typo from the five to two or not?
Yeah, when we approve it, it will be as amended, as per Randy's amendment.
If it's approved.
If it's approved, but I think it is going to be, it sounds...
I'd like to be done with it tonight.
Okay, is that a motion to approve? Let's see.
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-007.
So moved.
With Randy's amendment, section B5, from five feet to two feet.
Support.
Any other discussion? Josh?
Just, just a comment. We talked about this last time a little bit, but since this is the zoning ordinance, there is a variance provision that could apply yet in this case, that if somebody did have a situation where they were coming and going, you know, often over a weekend during this time period, they could have still the option to apply for a variance and be created an exception.
Yes, they would need a hardship inherent to their lot, but yes. A hardship that isn't, I like to RV, it's my lot is, my backyard's too small, my driveway's too small, et cetera. But yes.
So, we have a motion and support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Consent agenda tonight, approval would be in the best interest of the city because of loader purchase. They don't give those away, do they, anymore? No. So, we have the Treasures June Report, the Parks and Recreation Board May Minutes, Proclamation for the National Night Out, which is August 6, which is always kind of fun, and you know the chiefs are always there, so. And the, the purchase order for the motor pool, a loader, for $203,353.30. So, is there, before we open it up for questions, or if either the department has or anybody else wants to make comments, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any, yeah, Justin?
So, just real quick on the comment that was made in... So just real quick on the comment that was made in the public comment regarding the parking, where are we at with that? I guess I'm, I'm confused on it.
So I was trying to meet Marcy's timeline. She was heading out on vacation, and when I was reviewing the DDA reports, as I read most department reports, I realized that the journal entry, the reversal of the journal entry that was originally made, hadn't been done. And I knew that they were going to be talking about it at their meeting. So I went ahead and did that, and then submitted the report to them. So it's done. The twenty-five-thousand-dollar budget adjustment that you made at the last meeting approved. That's what that was.
That was on there previously. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about any item on the consent agenda? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Galvaros.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Norwood.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Ken, city managers' report, the last one you're going to give.
We said it before once.
We did. We did. And yet, here you are tonight, and we're very grateful for that, by the way.
Just a couple, there's no action for council on the manager's report tonight. There are a couple of items that are included in your packet for information, just to highlight those. We did have our city engineer, DPW director, myself, and actually, the incoming city manager, because he was here on that day. We attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago, hosted by the drain commissioner. And I put quite a bit in your packet referencing a potential upcoming project in the Beahan-Foldy Drain, which only has a small portion of the watershed in the city of Granville, and that's all in the extreme southeastern corner of the city. But they are gearing up for a project of some sort in, likely in late 2025. So this could potentially be a budget issue for you guys next year. But the, the map that's included shows a wide range of potential improvements that they could do out there, although they have not honed in on how expensive a project they're, they're likely to do at this point. But it was good information to have, and I just want the council to be aware that that was something under discussion. And then I also wanted to call out the information from the Michigan Municipal League that had the highlights of the state budget that was just passed in the last week, including a nice percentage increase to revenue sharing. It's not across the board, we can't just do it by a percentage, but the amount the state is budgeting for local government revenue sharing is up by about twenty-five percent across the state. And then there were a number of other areas that are potentially good news for the city. There was some information about bridge projects and grants, some information about additional millions of dollars dedicated to revitalization and placemaking, and just a number of things. So if you hadn't looked at that five or six-page document, I think it's worth taking a look at, just to get a sense for what the state budget does and potentially having an impact on Granville going forward. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Randy, let's start with you. Councilmember comments?
Just want to say thank you to everybody who was so involved in that Fourth of July parade. And it's, the danger is, when you start to name people, you forget somebody. But, I mean, this was our DPW, police, fire, parade committee, multiple volunteers, the list goes on and on. So I think it was a very highly successful event, and it says a lot about our community that we can still kind of host a regional event like that. So for everybody who was involved, thank you for all your hard work. So I appreciate it and noted. And that's it.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Thanks to everybody. Thanks to Amanda and the committee, put all the work in. And Paul, you were part of that as well. So I look forward to the report that Amanda's putting together. I thought they did a nice job of kind of reworking some of the events that we've had for a number of years, doing things a little bit differently, trying some new things, seemed to get a lot of involvement from the community, with sponsorships, and lots of different businesses and stuff involved, and individuals as well. So thanks to everybody who participated. I liked the parade being an hour earlier, and I heard positive comments about it being at ten o'clock as well. It's a little cooler in the day, people can get off to their barbecues and things like that, and hopefully, our city staff that work so hard and put in so much time, some of them can get to their families a little sooner, too. So the parade time at ten was good, I think. I hope we can take advantage of some of these funds that are in the state budget for our bridge and road projects that we've talked about. So it's encouraging that, that that's there as well. So, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Justin?
All right, a common theme of thanks tonight. I want to thank Chris for all of the work and the continual revisiting us to go through this ordinance. But I, obviously, I wasn't a big fan of it the first time around, and I thought you did a great job of navigating all of the feedback from the planning commission, from the council, even though some of that feedback sometimes was all over the place. You did a good job of weaving that thread through the needle. So appreciate that very much. The Fourth of July, it's the first time that I was in the city of Granville for the Fourth of July in a few years, as I'm usually up north with my parents. And it was just great to be here and see everything that was going on and participate. And I'm just equally as grateful as been said to all of the staff and the volunteers and everyone who makes that happen, because it was wonderful. And with all due respect to Bill, I thought the highlight of the parade was the flyover. But I just, I, to me, that was incredible to have that, and something really cool that I think is special to Granville. Not a lot of communities get that, but I heard a lot of what you said and agree with a lot of what you said. I mean, and finally, I just want to thank Ken for, you know, our last search did not go the way that we had hoped. And like you have so many times, you came to the aid of the council and came to the aid of the residents. And so thank you so much for stepping up and serving our community once again in this way. And I hope that this is your final retire, you know, step into retirement. Thank you very much.
Ken?
I just echo everything that was said, but I do want to thank Bill for his constructive criticism, and it's something to, to chew on. And Ken, I, golly, I think it ended up being, what, seven months?
Eight.
Eight.
Who's going to be counting? Going to be three, I think. Yeah.
Anyway, I, I can't say thanks enough. That was awesome for you to, to come in and spend some time with.
With Griffith, and Griffin, welcome again, and can't wait to have you start next week.
It is a month that started with J.
That's right.
That's what you said.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Schrader for his comments tonight. I'm on the Fourth of July committee, and we'll, we'll discuss your comments at our next meeting and let you, well, keep, keep posted on, you know, any possible changes. We'll see. I do want, and the other thing I want to say is, thanks to Ken for coming out of retirement, and wish you a very long retirement from this point forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not much new to say. Obviously, the Fourth was a great success. So thank you for all involved with that. Had another great experience there. I think my daughter got more waves in the, in the, on the back of that pickup truck than any of us did, that's for sure. I don't know if they were yelling Randy or Candy half the time.
It's Candy.
Chris, thank you for your patience with us over this journey. I'm, I'm fairly certain this will not be the last time we talk about it. But thank you for your patience and your diligence with this. This is, this was well timed and well thought through. So, and obviously, you saved the mushy stuff for eight months ago, Ken, but thank you. Obviously, it speaks to your character to come back, almost with no questions asked and say, how can I help? Grateful for your, your step in leadership. You will be missed again. But now that I'm not your employer, I guess, we can finally get on that bike ride together.
Yeah, Fourth of July was great. Thanks to everybody. This is a problem with going last in my comments. Everybody's said everything. Ditto, 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 ditto. A couple, a couple new things. Ken had put in our packet some information about the US Supreme Court ruling Grants Pass, Oregon, upholding their ban on people experiencing homelessness from sleeping outside on public property. I have a copy of the opinion, if anybody is interested in reading it. I'm kind of a geek for these kind of things, but I've read it. So there you go. The dissent was interesting, very robust dissent, but again, minority, three, three people dissented. So anyway, the Supreme Court has spoken, and we have a similar ordinance. Friday night, I had the privilege of welcoming a bunch of little leaguers in, for a tournament. And Teresa was in the pavilion, and it was fun. I think there were like three hundred kids and having a barbecue. And what a great spot, what a great space. And it was a perfect night for it. It was just beautiful weather, and yeah, it was, it was great. So, yeah, the final thing is, is thank you, Ken. I mean, I don't know if you've heard this story, but on, on a Monday night, the previous city manager resigned. So that was like at midnight or whatever. It was a long meeting. The next morning, I called Ken at nine AM, and we were in City Hall at nine-twenty. Ken, just boom, yeah, let's talk. So I, I don't know who else would do that, Ken. Thank you, thank you, thank you, from the bottom of our hearts. You, yeah, very much appreciate it.
Glad I've been able to help.
Yeah.
Looking forward to Griffin getting and going, though.
Yeah, yeah.
You mentioned that.
At least. All right. I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. And the opposition, please say no. Thanks, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your evening.